Awesome. Okay. So, we're gonna start tonight's meeting with a public hearing. That is, we're hearing comments on local law number six, which is the repeal of local law number four, which was the override of the tax cap that we do annually in case we need it for the budget, which we did not. We did not need to override the tax levy limit. So, we just go ahead and override that with this law tonight. Yeah, does anyone have any comments? On over overriding the, repealing the override of the tax cap? I didn't think so. I'll ask again, does anyone have any comment on repealing local law number or the override of the tax cap? Okay, this one usually goes just like, I'll ask one more time because I'm supposed to, does anyone have any comment on the repeal of the override of the tax cap law for 2021? That looks like a big no. Um, okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay, so, we're gonna move right on to applications. Application one is for the lighthouse cruises. Can I talk about this now? Well, let's go ahead and approve this with the hope that this will be able to happen. Or vote on it. I think it'll get approved. The application is for the Hudson Athens Lighthouse Preservation Society to be able to run their tours of the lighthouse from the park over the summer. I guess it's the second, the second Saturday of every month that they take cruises out there from our, our park, so. Can I get a motion for a resolution to approve this facility use application?
Amy, can I add one thing to that? Which is, you note that the application is for those four Saturdays that you mentioned, but there's also three Wednesdays. The Saturdays are by appointment only and require the purchase of a ticket if they go through, and the Wednesdays will be first come, first served, and free.
Well, and that information will be in our upcoming newsletter that will be sent out next Friday the fourth. So, and I will probably add it to the village calendar as well. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve this facility use application?
I will.
Oh, second.
Thanks Ricky.
I will.
Josh is the second. Excellent. All in favor?
I.
Bye.
Anyone opposed to that one? Okay. Great, so Karen's. Application number two is for a post-wedding brunch on September 26th, that's Sunday. I'm assuming that there's no conflicts. Because this was sent without any conflict. Dawn, do you know if there are any conflicts or?
No, there's no conflict.
Okay, um, they have 20 to 40 adults.
Are they bringing tables? It doesn't say if they're providing anything.
You know, they don't mention tables. They do say that they don't have any amplified music, correct?
Yeah.
So, I, I think it's in September, I think we can approve use of the park if they need the tables. You just tell them that if they use the tables, they need to put them back where they got them. Does that sound to everyone? I don't know how people keep moving those tables. I don't know how. They weigh in ton. Okay, so, can I get a motion to approve Sarah's wedding brunch for September 26th?
I'll offer.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so Carrie's on that application. Next. It's a baby shower on June 26th for 35 adults and 10 children. This is someone from town in the village here. They also do not need amplified music. I'm assuming, again, we'll just let them know if they need to move the tables, that they put them back where they got them. Can I get a motion to approve Camille's Galis baby shower on June 26th?
I will, Amy, I will.
Thanks Ricky.
I'll second.
Great, Gail, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Okay. So Carrie's. And the fourth one. Hey, I know this guy. This is, Josh is having an event for the Democratic Committee on June 8th. It's a Tuesday. No amplified music. Do you need the tables, Josh? Won't move them.
We'll probably, we'll probably use one or two tables, but not move them.
Okay, yeah, cuz if you, if it does rain and you end up in the gazebo, it is really hard to move those tables up in there. Okay, um, can I get a motion to?
Amy?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yeah.
Amy?
Uh huh.
You know, that is village property. There's not supposed to be any politics on village property whatsoever.
I'm not sure that's a.
So, I vote no for that one.
Okay, I haven't seen that.
I believe it's.
Okay, let's.
I believe that's a rule.
Off the top of my head, I don't know. If you want me to look into it, I can, but yeah, it, if they were, I don't know. I don't know.
It's a social, it's a social event.
Yeah.
It's not a politicking event.
Cool, Gail, you've been on the board the longest. Have you heard anything about that?
I know that we hold our caucuses, which is a political thing down to meeting room.
But it's curious.
Yeah. I know a big stink was made one time when they were gonna have a a function over at the cultural center, but it ended up, we could have it at the cultural center. That was years ago.
We don't have another meeting until the day after this is supposed to occur. If we put it on hold until we look up the law, is it something that I can just approve?
Why don't you, why don't you approve it conditionally and just let me take a look into it?
Okay.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's okay, but let's just confirm now that Ricky said.
It's not like a rally. It's just to meet up and socialize. Um, okay, so, I'm gonna go ahead and approve it conditionally based on what Tal finds out about what's in the code specifically about this. And then, I don't know, you'll let me know and then I'll just, I'll let Gail know.
Yep, and I'll see what I can, I'll see if I can find it tonight even, while we're still on.
Do we need to take a vote, Amy?
Um, I guess we can vote on it, but yeah, okay, so let's, let's go ahead and vote and the condition is whether or not it's allowed. So, can I get a motion to approve this on the condition that there is nothing in the code preventing it from happening?
So.
Okay, thanks, Gail.
Second.
Thank you, Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, anyone opposed?
Both.
Okay, uh, we have one opposed. That's Ricky. But this passes as of right now with the caveat that we look up whether or not it is allowed. Josh, I'll let you know if we find anything preventing you from having that event.
Thank you so much, Amy.
No problem. Did everyone, we're moving on to resolutions, did everyone get a chance to review the board meeting minutes from May 12?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Was there anything fishy in there?
No.
No. Okay. So, with that, uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the May 12th meeting?
I will offer.
Thank you Nancy.
I'll second.
Thank you, Gail. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Okay, so, that carries. Did anyone and or everyone get a chance to review the vouchers? That were presented this evening?
Yes.
Yes. Anything, uh, we need to look into, anything? Ask you?
No.
No. In that, in that case, can I get a motion to approve the vouchers?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the voucher? Okay, in that case, so Carrie's, I didn't think anyone was opposed. Um, so, this is something we do annually as well, the approving standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials. It's a, it's a standard for the, for New York State that we just approved this. Does anyone have any questions about it? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the standard workday reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials? It's the same as it was.
So.
I'll prove it.
Okay, so, we're gonna go Josh, then Ricky as a second, and we'll take a vote. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Amy, before we leave the resolutions section, do we, to actually vote on, uh, local law number six?
Um, yeah, we will. It's, I'm doing this part now.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not listed in here, but I'll take a vote right now after this is reported. So, uh, the standard workday reporting resolution carries unanimously. So now, uh, as we just heard, public comment on local law number six, which is the repeal of local law number four. We hardly knew you. Is there anything that anyone from the board would like to offer about this as a final word? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve local law six, which repeals local law four?
So.
I'll offer.
Oh.
Okay, all right, we'll go Nancy, Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and no one's opposed, so that carries unanimously. Okay, this one's really good. Correspondence, my favorite part. Um, this is this is a letter we get every year from the Department of Transportation about our chips funding, our, our state funding for our roads. It's addressed to Anthony. It just states, um, you know, what we get and what was, you know, what we have rolled over as well. So, it's an accounting of, of what, what funding is coming in from the state for the department of, from the Department of Transportation.
I, I have a question about this, Amy. We were supposed to be getting more chips money this year, I think, through the federal stimulus. Is that reflected in this?
I don't believe so, looking at these numbers, but I don't know the details on that. Anthony's not here. Uh, and Dawn, do you know about that, or should we be looking into this?
We. I don't think they released that money yet.
I feel like that all of those federal funds are just taking a lot longer, and this is just a standard thing that we get every year. I've seen it about three years in a row now. So, that's something that bears looking into. If there was an increase in chips funding, I wasn't sure if that was how they were going to allot that money through the existing chip program. But I'll ask Anthony Wayne, do you have any insight into that as DPW?
No, I don't.
Okay, so, I'll ask Anthony, um, what these numbers, they look to me like the, like the same amount, you know, around the same amount that we would get annually. So, I don't think this reflects that, John.
Thank you.
But we're digging into. So, let me just make a note.
Yes, no, I, I assumed that the release of those monies would be accompanied by a little more hullabaloo. But you never know, and it, I just wasn't sure since I didn't have last year's amounts in front of me, whether this was somehow arriving and this was good news or just our usual good news.
I think it's, I think it's our usual good news. I, um, and, you know, I don't know the exact figures off the top of my head, but from having my head in the budget for so long, this looks about right, like with maybe just the usual annual increase that they would give you. But I'll check into what the stimulus package does to affect this funding. But I have a feeling none of those, none of those funds were released yet. I mean, it's, the, the rest of it has been slow going as well. Okay, so correspondence number two is from Green County. This is just to let us know who was awarded the, the bids for materials for the highway department through the county. So, these are, we can feedback on this to purchase things as well. So, that's pretty standard. That happens annually as well. The next two are the same. This one is for Washington Screen Crush Stone. Let's let you know who got the bid awarded for that, and it's several, um, several providers, so if you wanna go with the, with the county, you still have a choice. And the last one is an authorization of the distribution of mortgage tax from the county. So, they list every, every town and village. The town of Athens gets $109,412.04, and the village gets $6,869.35. Okay, um, so that is the correspondence. Under new business is the tax warrant for collecting taxes is ready to be signed by me, which I knew because MJ emailed me earlier. I will go and sign that tomorrow. I'm sure there's other things there for me to sign. This just allows MJ to, uh, the village clerk to collect the taxes as as levied, as levied by the assessor. And old business. Who knows what's, um, I know Nancy, you have something about the rec director, but have we had any movement on the DPW labor? Has anything, uh, anyone applied? Do we have any?
Hasn't been posted yet. Anthony, Anthony and his team decided to wait until next week for hire in June, so it should be going into the paper next week.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep, summer rec, we, um, went back into the paper today. And I also shared the ad with, um, a friend of mine who works at Cooks at the Athens, and she passed it on to the superintendent. So, hopefully that gives us a little bit more traction.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, uh, believe it or not, that's the end of the written agenda. Second flew through that, but it was pretty compulsory. So, we'll do the old go around the room. Uh, let's start with Nancy this time.
Okay, um, I have just a short list. The brush pile, um, the signs that were in the brush pile for leaves and for brush, and they kept falling over. So, the guys yesterday actually put the poles in the ground. And they weren't falling over necessarily because of when people were backing into them, so they are now sturdy. Yeah, we covered the DP, the DPW guy. And this is really, Anthony spoke to Seth and Joe about this. The pool, it has been painted and it will start to get filled this weekend. It takes about 14 days, but just so that they're aware that there is going to be extra usage over that time period.
Okay.
Um, also Chris Feaster's gonna start, um, putting the plants out, and in order to do that, he's going, he's requested to use the water truck again, and apparently he needs a, to sign a waiver for that every year.
That's correct.
Okay, um, and, um, Anthony asked about the guy that has the electric car on North Franklin? And when, um, when his, when his 90 days is up? So, July 1st?
Uh, we did that law at the 414 meeting. That's when that finally passed, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, mid-July.
Okay. Um, and then, um, Memorial Day. Gail, this, this sign, there's nothing on the sign across from Stewart's about the parade. Do we wanna put that up? I think it's kinda late since it's Monday, but I'll, I'll ask Ricky. Yeah, cuz it's blank now. Um, and then, uh, Anthony, Anthony, I think he's gotten the okay from, um, George at the Legion, but he's going to be driving the new pickup truck in the parade. And my other question is, are we all meeting someplace centrally before the parade starts?
Um, yeah, the lineup is on North Franklin, just
Yeah.
at the Little League Field. Um, you wanna walk over together or you just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Um, so why don't we all meet on like? Well, Ricky, you come from the other direction.
All right, I can, I'll meet you there.
We as a board will meet, um, like right by the Little League field where the
Press Box?
First, first base, yeah, by the press box. Good call, Rick.
Okay.
All right, um, nine? Well, we'll meet about like 10 till 9, something like that.
Okay, usually they start lineup at 8:30. They tell you to be there around then.
Okay.
And we usually, usually go up to that next corner.
We'll have to go to bed early that night. Okay.
And then the, the next thing that's gonna have a little bit more teeth is, um, and we've had a discussion about this, the, the Airbnb law. Um, this, this came up at the last planning board meeting. Code enforcers brought this up. So, um, I spoke to Tal about this. There Tal raises there, there isn't a bad actor provision in the Airbnb law, so my question was, if there is a resident who has not, who is known to have an Airbnb and hasn't signed the law, but now wants to get a, a building permit to do some work, is there any way to enforce the signing of the registration so that the building permit is, is withheld for that?
That's a Tal question.
Yeah.
Um, if we, unless it's in the actual law itself, I would say, no, we can't require it. Um, we can certainly strongly suggest that they do it and point out that there is a time, excuse me, a time period for them to sign up, and if they don't sign up, then they are gonna be in violation.
Yeah, I think this person's already deep in violation.
This, this, this person has definitely told me in no uncertain terms that, um, the, it's not gonna be signed, so, um.
Well, maybe, um, you know, when we passed that law, my feeling was that it was a good start. I didn't wanna be too restrictive on people, but it was also based on people just doing the right thing. It's, it wasn't a lot to ask. Um, so maybe we can look at strengthening, strengthening it a little bit so that we don't have situations like, like this, because you know, I, I, I don't think it was a, a whole lot to ask of people who are monetizing their homes just to contribute a little something and at least register it so we know what's going on, if there is a problem, whatever. So, maybe that's something we look at further. Gail and I worked on the original law, so I don't know, Gail, you wanna, we'll have a powwow about it, or you and Nancy can take it from here. Tal, what are your thoughts on that? You think it's worth revisiting or should we?
Amy?
Yeah.
Amy? Do we have, if they keep being in violation, do we have the power to shut them, to close them down?
Essentially, I mean, i- in theory, yes, but I mean, if we can't enforce them signing up, it's gonna be hard to enforce shutting them down, right? I, you know, it's the, this was the question when we came up with this, enforcement is the difficulty. And like, like we said, it wasn't really meant to be punitive, but at the same time, we should have a record of how many of these properties are active in the village, and if people don't, uh, you know, sign up, we won't know. So, I don't know. I, there is, there is a punishment. I don't, you know, there is a stipulation in the law for if someone's in violation of it, but it's, again, it's gonna be just as difficult to to enforce as the actual law, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the thought that was, that was, the analogy was, if you don't pay speeding tickets when it comes to renew your license, you can't renew or your registration without, you know, fulfilling those tickets. So, this would be the same thing. You're not in compliance, you can't get a building permit. I, but I mean, it's not for the board to weigh in on because we're not code enforcement.
Yeah.
We're not involved with the enforcement of this. I just thought that there might be a discussion about how to
How to.
Just make it more enforceable.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think if we're going to go down that road, then we can make it not just applicable to the Airbnb, but to every law. If you have any violation for anything in the village, um, then you are disqualified from getting a building permit, filing an application with the planning board, whatever, until you clean up those violations.
Facility applications. Anything where we ask you to do something, if you don't do it, then you ask us for something, you don't get it.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you shouldn't be able to pick, you shouldn't be able to pick and choose which, which laws you'd like to comply with, basically.
That sounds reasonable to me. Um, let's, let's figure out how we do that and, and, and move forward on that.
Thank you, and that's it for me.
Okay, Gail, do you have anything?
I just have, I spoke to someone about the flags down at the, um, park. Um, and there are two spots that Maria and Jane are supposed to have beginning in June. So, I will.
No, you can unmute, you guys. Maria, Jean, oh, you're.
Hi, hi, everybody. The permit that we have is for the four flags at the base.
Four flag.
Second street. And unfortunately, um, we're in the position again this year where we have to take down four flags in order to put ours up. But I had a very constructive, very pleasant conversation with Jim from the paddock club. So, we're all good there.
Okay.
Um, and they'll go up June 1st at 6:00 PM.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
No, we're good.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you for taking care of that.
No problem.
Okay. Anything else?
The only other thing I have is that, um, Officer Russo put in, um, to be reimbursed grant money for the police vest.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I will double check on that. Ricky, did you have anything?
Yeah. I had a nice conversation with Seth and Joe over the water and sewer. Anthony fixed a big leak up by the old deli up there by Chucky Miller's, and we averaged about 50,000 to 60,000 gallons a day that stopped going into the sewer plant. And it helped our water plant also, so they're on the right track. So, and we're under the limit down at the sewer plant as of right now.
Very good.
So, they're, they're doing good. They're, they're trying, so I can't say nothing. They're, they're great.
Excellent. Thanks for the good news.
That makes you feel a little bit better?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Anything else?
That's all, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, that's Ellen.
Josh?
Hi, uh, I do have a few things. The first thing, I just wanna pick up on something that, uh, Nancy said and, and Gail said, which is to kind of make sure that we, uh, recognize the paddock club for the generosity of the flag placement. The Paddock Club for the generosity of the flag placement, um as they did in prior years, I don't know if everybody. Always knows that that's not something that the village government is doing, that's a civic contribution, a group of people. Come together and do that just because they love the village. So um I wanted to thank the Paddock Club for that, and as was alluded to, um, uh, the. Representatives from the LGBTQ community, uh also to celebrate Pride Month. Uh, we'll be putting up some flags, um pride flags at the bottom of Second Street on June first. A little ceremony at six P M, nothing fancy, uh people are welcome to stop by. Um, and then um as Nancy mentioned, uh she mentioned in passing Chris Feaster using the water truck. Um, and if you've lived in the village for more than ten minutes, you've probably seen these beautiful flowers. Every year, all over the village, enormous displays, and again, that's not the village that's doing that, that's. Uh, and that's not even a group of people, that's Chris and Carol Feaster, and so um since I understand from what Nancy said that. That's about to come out, I would just wanted to kind of do a public shout out to them and thank them for their continued contribution. Um, the second thing I wanted to talk about was um, just to give a little update on the clean energy community. Process that uh we're we're pursuing, um at this point, um assuming we get the um. Clean energy, uh the climate smart community, which we think we will, not officially told yet. Uh, we're, we are at sixteen hundred points toward the first um benchmark, which is three thousand points. Where we get a ten thousand dollar award, and um it it's looking as if we may get. Five hundred points for uh the heat pump that was installed as part of the um. D P W building construction, and that was not something I knew about, so that's uh an extra five hundred points. And then uh also, uh I mentioned in passing, there is this thing called the stretch code. The New York State Stretch Code, which is an energy code that's a little progressive, that if we adopt that. Uh, we get twelve hundred points, and since our last meeting, um the technical advisor. Uh, to the Clean Energy Program on the Stretch Code has made a presentation to both of our code enforcement officers. Uh, and um, uh, it uh it's also been presented to the planning board chair, and they don't. They seem fine with it, so I would just like to arrange. For a much shorter non-technical presentation to our board, maybe ten minutes at a subsequent meeting. So that we can then, I guess, put it out for public hearing, uh to adopt the stretch code, because if we do that, as I said, we're at sixteen hundred. If we get five hundred for the um, uh for the heat pump at the D P W building and twelve hundred. For the stretch code, that would put us at thirty-three hundred, uh we'll get ten thousand dollars, and then. Uh, we have several other things which I won't go into ta- into today because they're not as far as far along. But we do believe that we're gonna be able to get to four thousand points, um not too long after that, which would give us another twenty thousand. Um, so I did wanna give that update, but also request uh to arrange for someone to come. Make a presentation on the stretch code at an upcoming meeting.
That sounds good, Josh, um, one thing I wanted to ask, if you could follow up with them and and maybe get together with uh. With uh MJ on it, it it appears as if we haven't received all the funds from the first round of this. Um, I don't know if that was a COVID thing that slowed it down, but if you could check in with them and just see what might be holding that up, I think we've only received something like. Seven, seventy-five hundred, so um, I don't know the, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but MJ mentioned it when we were doing the budget. Um, so just check in with them on that, please, that'd be great.
I sure will, uh it's, it's a, it's a thirty thousand dollar award that we got first time. And I do believe that it came, there are ru- there are like milestones you have to accomplish in order to get it, and um. It may be that you don't get the final payment until you've finished, I just don't know. But but I will, I will check on that, but um what what's your, what are your thoughts, Amy, about stretch code uh presentation?
I think, I think a presentation would be good because it's uh, it's the best way for everybody in the community to wrap their brains around. Some new legislation that might affect what they do when they're renovating their homes or building something new, so um I think that's alright, let's talk about. When to schedule, probably not until uh the twenty-third at the earliest, cuz that's the next public agenda meeting, I like to keep those things. Um, on those meetings so that we have ample time for the department heads during their meeting, cuz those can tend to. To go long, and there's a lot that comes up at those, so why don't we look at uh maybe the next public meeting, uh public agenda meeting?
I'll, I'll start a little uh email with you and the people who would be making the presentation. And see if that works for everybody, thank you.
That's good, thanks, Josh.
Mm-hmm, um, the next thing I also wanted to mention is, people may remember uh from two years ago. Uh, our former mayor, one of his earliest uh acts was to uh put together in very short order. Uh, an application for Brownfield Opportunity Area um nomination um study. And uh we had a public hearing that was approved, and um, uh, we got very close. Um, and we just found out that uh the, there was an in, um, an interruption last year because of COVID. Uh, but this year, the money is coming back, applications are actually due in two months. Um, w- w- our consultants, who we were, I helped Stefan when he did that, um, so he, they sent an email. To him and to me, and I told, I looped Amy in and uh said that Stefan had stepped down, um. But um, the the the, if we do need to do a public hearing on that, um given the time span required. Uh, w- we should, we should do that soon, so I wanted to get, so so, Amy, you had indicated an interest in this, I just wanna make sure. You're still interested in that and would like to set up a meeting with you and the consultant to um figure out next steps.
Yeah, why don't we look at uh, we can get together with them next week at some point, uh after the holiday weekend.
Very good, mm-hmm.
Thank um.
Okay.
Pretty good, like Tuesday and Thursday of next week are the best days for me.
Okay, oh, I will work with your calendar, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Mm-hmm, uh, the next thing, um, I I just wanted to uh mention to you, um. The local waterfront revitalization plan, that is a a a kind of a fairly important piece of our. Kind of planning, rela- similar to comprehensive plan, uh and uh other elements. And uh I wanted to, by the way, mention and thank, I don't, I hope it's public, she has said so, that Claire Partey has uh stepped down. As the chair, and um if we're going, there's money available to uh upgrade the local waterfront revitalization plan. And uh especially in the context of BOA, the comprehensive plan, the change in zoning that we made to change the waterfront use. Uh, it would just seem like uh it would make sense to uh upgrade the L W R P, and for that, I think it would be helpful. To have a whack and and obviously a new chair on board, so I don't know what your thoughts on that are, Amy.
Uh, yeah, Claire contacted me when she um decided that to step down, and we had a a bit of an exchange about who might be. Um, who might be a good fit for that role, so um I'll speak to her further and sound some of the people that she had mentioned, and. Um, you know, we'll, I'll get together with you on that too, let you know where we got, cuz I, you know. I know that's, you're the liaison to that, yes?
Yes.
I don't have my org docs in front of me, so, yeah, I'll let you know far gone, and and if you have input on who might be a a good fit for that as well. But uh, yeah, Claire had some names that she threw out to me, so I will, I will double check in with them. Um, it's put it on my list.
Thank you, um, next thing I had uh is really a question for Tal, uh the Athens Gen Pilot. You were gonna be putting to, you you are still yet to speak this evening, so you may be planning to say something there, but in. Case you weren't, I just wa- wanted to check in on, you were gonna put together a timetable uh for us on important dates.
Yes, and I'm still, I'm still working on that, unfortunately, I don't have it finished, but it has not dropped off my uh, my list, it's there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, mm-hmm, um, next uh thing, I had a couple of uh constituent items. I I mentioned it uh before, the New York State Boat Launch, uh we had talked about, I mean, we don't control it, we don't fix it. But whether we could use our bully pulpit to uh speak to the state about repairing that, um. And you know, the property next door is potentially going to have state involvement, so I don't, I wanted to check in. And see if there's any progress on that.
There is not at this time, I know.
Okay, um, also constituent, this is something, you know, we uh as board members, we regularly get copied on. The complaints that come into um the village office, and um. Many of them end up well going on to be taken care of, uh and so I, uh, you know, there was one that came. A couple of weeks ago, and I'm just not sure what happened, which was uh someone was complaining about harassment and doxing. Um, on social media, and it was.
I, I I haven't, I I I had a thought about the complaints and bringing them up, but a lot of these are neighbor disputes. That I don't really think, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, Tal, I I feel uncomfortable bringing some of these up. In a public forum, if it's a, if it turns out to be a civil matter between neighbors, like I understand that we get. We get C C'd on these emails, but this, I know what, I do know what you're talking about, um. This is really truly a a a a just a neighbor dispute, these two people, these two, how, they just. Do not, will not, will never gonna mesh, um, and at this point, that complaint is. Something that we can't even do anything about, so as opposed to bringing it up in this forum where it might cause some sort of controversy. And neighbors might take sides, or it might, I think we should just sort of let the departments that handle that handle that. Code enforcement has been on this situation, but this particular complaint, there's really nothing that we can do to control somebody's online habits. Unfortunately, uh you know, Facebook is a lost cause when it comes to that, they're never gonna help anyone with anything, ever. Um, so we really are powerless to stop, other than if we all wanna go online and and come, you know. Report it, I do think that the people on the community board have done a good job of shutting things like that down. Um, but I I did have this thought, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I meant to um address it with you all. That complaints probably shouldn't be something we discuss unless they require board action or a board vote. Because most of the time, many of the times, it is, um, you know, neighbors that are just so fed up with themselves, with each other, I mean. That they turn to the board, they turn to the village for help, and unfortunately, in most of these situations, we can't help, I can't stop somebody from. Doing something on Facebook, that's Facebook's job, and they've, they've refused to do it for, you know, over a decade now.
We can't split the baby.
Yeah, I I, I know, I know what you're talking about, because it, it makes me so, but I just wish everyone would just be cool, but they're not going to, but there's. Uh, we can't legislate cool.
Can we, can we have an understanding then and have it reflected in the minutes, because I I do feel. Kind of an obligation when I'm on the receiving end of one of those complaint forms, that it's as if that person has come to me and asked for help, that's why. That's why I do bring these up, could we have an understanding for the minutes?
Yeah.
That unless we're instructed that a certain complaint is going to be. The subject of an agenda item in the village board meeting, uh the w- w- we will leave it. To the uh relevant department.
Yeah, I um, yes, absolutely, this is something that um I had written after the last meeting. Um, because I just had this thought on how this is um, this isn't something that we should. Give oxygen to if we don't need to, um, so yes, let's note that in the minutes, and I will. I I have some writings about how I think these things should be handled, and I will forward them to all of you. Um, unfortunately, I did have to leave town on short notice, uh, and I'm just, I'm just back and getting my head on straight. Uh, so, yes, I I think that it'll be reflected in these minutes because of this conversation, but then I will make it more official moving forward as far as I. You know, uh, meeting procedures and whatnot, cuz I I do feel like unless it's something that needs our vote or our attention, or if it's a, you know. We're at the uh department heads meeting, and it's something we need to tell one of the department heads to follow up on. There's not really a point to bringing it up in the public sphere where it could just add fuel to uh to a a neighbor feud.
And 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 that way also constituents will 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 have a place to go to see, you know, why it is. That they've submitted a report, if it doesn't come up at our meeting.
And I think the thing is that I, you know, the less we bring these things out in a public situation, the more comfortable people might feel. Coming to somebody to, you know, even if there's nothing we can do, I want people to feel comfortable. Um, so at least if somebody's heard them, you know, uh, and that way, when there is something we can do, they won't. Not wanna come because, you know, it was, it was aired in public. Um, but yeah, I do know what you're talking about, unfortunately, uh, there's nothing we can do about it, but code enforcement has been on that situation with anything that they actually. Can handle, which at this point is, it's pretty much closed except for the uh ill will between neighbors. Unfortunately.
Thank you, um, the the last thing I have is kind of a non thing, which is, um, I had been men- I mentioned to a number of board members. Uh, that I was interested in discussing an environmental issue this evening, uh but on the advice of uh village attorney. Uh, it is something that is not appropriate uh to be brought up uh at this time, um. So I'm going to uh defer bringing that item up and um. Uh, will be kind of w- working with the mayor and the village attorney uh to figure out uh the best way and time. Uh, to bring up the issue, cuz it is something that people are interested in, but as I said, uh based on the advice of the village attorney. It does not seem appropriate to bring it up this evening.
Thank you, Josh, um, yes, I'm I'm glad Tal backed me up, um. Okay, so uh Tal, did you have anything?
Uh, just the brief little bit, um, just to acknowledge, yes, Athens Jan timeline is still on my list as. Also finishing my review of the police reform, um there are a couple of articles that they've asked me to take a look at, and I've gotta finish that up as well. Um, and then you and I will also need to get our um heads together uh to finish off the dining and street. Issue and getting that that done, moving it forward, not only for the declaration of emergency, but also permanently. So we'll do that as well, um, you know, we're we're okay for now because we have the the emergency already set, but um. And then I did, did not find anything at all in our village code about leasing or allowing political parties to use. Um, private, I'm not, not private, um, using village property, so I went out to NICOM and downloaded their. Handbook for village um officials, and it does say that we are allowed to have um private entities lease or use. Um, our property, among those, they listed fire companies, political parties, Little League Baseball Club. Ambulance Corporation, lease um waterfront property, things of that nature, so, yes.
Great, that's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Tal, uh, Dom, did you have anything? Hold on, Willie has something, hold on a minute.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, great, um.
Amy?
Yeah.
Do you have anything?
I do, Ricky, thank you. I have a few things.
Okay.
Um, first off, I heard from Stefan who heard from um. The powers that be that we did not get the C D B G uh grant. Um, I can request a a debrief meeting, so I will put in for that, um. And I will, I will first um touch base with Stefan on on that, cuz I I actually haven't seen, I didn't ever see the application, so. Um, the ferry situation, um. Um. Uh, we were supposed to have a meeting today at three o'clock, um. About the situation with the Hudson. About the situation with the Hudson, uh, dock. What, what it is, is that I think the public information is a little off from what the actual situation is over there. Hudson Cruises is not barred from using the docks necessarily, but there's a share situation that they need to adhere to. And I don't think it fits in very well for his business model, because he has one boat that's very. Very large and that's the one that's going to be the issue. If it was as simple as saying, keep the ferry here, I would have already said, keep the ferry here. Uh, unfortunately, the owner of the business was unable to attend the meeting at the last minute. So we've scheduled them another meeting for tomorrow at one P M. Um, Todd, our wonderful Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee Chair, that is a mouthful. Um, is, uh, helping to arrange, uh, this meeting and talk because he, he knows the owner of the company and I've never met him. So he's introducing us and we're gonna sit and we're gonna put our heads together and try and come up with a solution to keep the ferry running and find a new home. Uh, you know, if it's a matter of, he can use the dock in Hudson some of the time. And then we can find another place for the big boat. I have, I have some ideas of people to reach out to. I, I don't want to say now because it's so preliminary, but we're hoping to get this. Figured out at least a good temporary solution so that next year, you know, we have time to, uh. To, um. Get something more permanent together for next year, because it would be a real blow to lose the ferry. Um, but it is not the only aspect of his business and the other boats and the other aspects of the business. Need to, um, run in order to basically support the ferry, which doesn't really make any money for him. Um, so he's in a position, we're in a position, but I think we have a lot of allies in this that will help us if we reach out. So unfortunately, I hope to have more to tell you tonight about that, but the, our three o'clock meeting sort of hit the skids. So we're gonna meet again tomorrow at one and, um, if I have any news. That's actually developed, I will try to keep you all posted on the blog. Um, because it's gonna be a couple of weeks before we can meet all together again. Um, so if I have, if I have good news, if I have bad news, if I have news, I'll share it. Um. The other thing I wanted to talk about is that I am prepared to say that we should go back to in-person meetings. At, uh, in June, the first meeting in June. Uh, the numbers are low, people are getting vaccinated, um, regardless of who is or isn't vaccinated. Because we're not gonna ask people to, you know, prove it. Uh, we will stick with masks and social distancing. Uh, Chief Wayne, we can use the firehouse, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so, uh, if there's no objections from any board members. I think we need to bring humanity back and sit face to face in these meetings. Um, starting with the June ninth meeting, I would like to take us back to in-person at the firehouse. Barring any unforeseen craziness, which as we know, after the last year plus of our lives, there can be unforeseen craziness at any moment.
Amy, I'm not sure if you saw, uh, there was an email that came around this afternoon. From the New York Planning Federation.
I did.
Yeah, to make permanent the, 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 uh, privilege or the opportunity, the option. The option to have, uh, Zoom meetings.
I think it, I think it's great if they do make that permanent, because, you know. For larger communities and or, you know, there's a big snowstorm or something in the winter, that'd be great, but. I think for us, it's right to go back now to sitting in the room together.
That's true. I agree. But the other thing that we might want to consider, uh, I'll just mention it is in passing, is that if that, that law does pass. Perhaps me, we might want to invest in the technology that allows us to have mixed meetings. Where we can be present, but, uh, community members can participate remotely.
Well, as you know, that's a desire of mine, but the time and the expense is just not feasible right now. Uh, I like that we can do this like this, but this is a very easy production standard. Zoom does it for me. Uh, there's five board members, there's public to speak. I mean, this is a production with microphones and cameras if we want to do that. And I'd rather get the village clerks new computers before I get that. They haven't had computers since. I don't know.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven? Dear Lord. Um, so I, I think it's a great idea. Um, if you want to do some research on what do, I, I. For me, I'm envisioning in order for it to have the quality that it's worth bothering, we need quite a setup. I mean, it's quite a production. Um, to capture everybody's, uh, you know.
Well, let's wait and see, let's wait and see if the law passes.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, that was my last thing was, uh, that we will go back to in-person meetings as of June nine. Uh, and I guess that is it for the written agenda. That is it for all the board members, barring any last minute issues. And.
Do you think Don, Don might have the village clerk?
She said no.
Oh, sorry, I missed.
Don, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, um.
Sorry, Amy. Can I just ask Josh a question?
Yeah.
Uh, where do we stand with the, um, electric car charging stations?
I guess, so, um, the, uh. I think at this point, we're just waiting for the clerk's office to give the vendor. Our, um, Central Hudson account number. So that they can, um, start the process of, um, you know, creating. Uh, the, the relationship that, um, allows for the electric vehicles.
Thank you.
Actually, actually, we're waiting for them to send us a voucher back. We sent it out to them sometime this week.
Who, who, who was the voucher sent to, Don?
The electric car company.
Did you give them?
The charging, the charging company.
Okay, the last email that I was copied on, uh, they, was just one where, uh, Ron was asking for. The Central Hudson account number and I didn't, so I don't know. Did, did you give?
Yeah, they, they sent us a bill and then we sent back to them that we needed a voucher filled out, so we sent that to them.
Have you given them the, uh, uh, Central Hudson account number yet?
I believe Mary Jo did. Mary Jo told me that if this was mentioned tonight to bring up about the voucher, so.
Okay, how, uh, how long ago was that sent? Is that something you would like me to tweet Ron about? Or is it still within a reasonable period of time?
No, I think it's, it's reasonable. I think we're good.
Let me know if, if you don't hear back in a reasonable time.
Okay. Okay, um.
Okay, is that it?
I have two questions. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, two things from earlier in the meeting. What is, you, you talked about something and giving money, Athens, the town of Athens got a hundred thousand. And the village of Athens got six. Well, I totally spaced until you said the numbers.
Oh, um, it was distribution of mortgage tax.
Okay.
Uh, it's, I can read the, it be resolved that the mortgage tax has a portion to the several towns and incorporated villages in the county of Green. As shown on the Absar sheet, amounting to, well, total, it's, oh, oh, million, one, twenty. Uh, be the same and hereby approved and be it. And then it shows how it's distributed to each community.
Okay. And my other question was the, um, Ask Jen, uh, pilot. So are they still on, are they still on a pilot? I mean, I know there are di- different people have taken them over during the years, so. I'm just curious.
It expires in twenty twenty-two, so that's, um, we're trying to stay on top of it so that we're prepared. With what we need to get for ourselves when that comes around. And we'll have to work with the town on that as well.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
No problem. Anyone else? Okay, excellent. Thank you, guys. I'm gonna go ice my hip from my fall. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Hello, sir.
Okay, Nancy, Ricky, get a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Okay, good night, everyone. Thank you.